Let's begin the meeting with roll call, please shut the doors.
Commissioner Eastman?
Here.
Commissioner Gager?
Here.
Commissioner Rogers?
Here.
Commissioner Warren?
Here.
Mayor Welch?
Here. I stand for the opening prayer and pledge of allegiance.
Let's pray. Dear heavenly Father, as we gather here to work towards a common goal, we ask for your presence to guide and direct our decisions. We know your will is good for all members of our community. We also pray for our police and fire department and city workers for their safety in the work they do. In Jesus Christ we pray, amen.
Amen. Let's allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Sir, do we have any deletions or additions to the agenda?
Yes, we'd like to add three items to new business. Resolution authorizing South Central Kansas Medical Clinic subsidiary of South Central Kansas Medical Center to submit application to the Kansas Public Employer Retirement System. We have another resolution that would authorize the city of Arc Kansas City to enter into a contract agreement with Retail Attractions LLC, Regional Development Consulting Services. And then finally, a resolution declaring eligibility of the city of Arc Kansas City to submit an application to the Kansas Department of Transportation for the use of transportation alternatives program funds set forth by MAP 21 for Central Trail.
Okay. With the addition of the three resolutions, South Central Kansas Medical Center, Retail Solutions, and KDOT, do we have an approval of the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. We have approved the addition to the agenda. Can I have an approval of the agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
I have a motion as second to approval of the agenda. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Okay. Do we have any words and proclamations? Okay, we have a recognition of visitors. I'd like to present this, Bob Matthews, please. Good evening, Bob, welcome.
Antique cars. Mayor, Commissioners, City Manager. I'm here tonight on behalf of the Arc Kansas City Early Bird Lions Club.
Can you pull your mic up a little so we can hear?
Mic up and my mask down. Our club is sponsoring a dinner for the police department. The fire department is what it started out for. That would be on November the seventh from eleven a.m. until two p.m. Would be at Parker Field Venue. We will furnish hamburgers, hot dogs, baked beans, potato salad, and water, but we don't furnish your dessert. We're broke. And I said I would only talk an hour, Mayor, but after being threatened, I'm going to cut it short. I have taken it on myself to extend this to the deputy sheriffs that patrol the southern half of the county. And tonight, I'm really stepping out, I'm extending it to the city commission.
Thank you.
And their families. As that you come out, we do have one little restriction we'd like to know by tomorrow. And if the city, I've already talked to the city manager, and if we could kind of put a little pressure to make sure the police and the fire department give us a number by tomorrow so we'll know how many to cook for on Saturday.
Seven noon?
From eleven till?
Two.
Two?
Come and go. Come and go.
Yes. And that's for you, your spouse, your family. We'll, as long as we know how many is coming, we'll have.
My uncles, my cousins.
Your uncle, yeah. Have your uncle.
Hey, thank you, Bob.
Bob, thank you for coming up tonight and telling us.
Bob, I'm going to be out of town, so we don't make it, but I appreciate the offer.
It is nice, you guys are early Birds Lions Club, and like most, all the community organizations have done a lot for this community, and so thanks.
And you have down at the bottom who you can, to him not important enough to get on the bottom of you.
Wow.
That's funny.
He has only been a Lions for fifty-five years, so.
Well, well.
Not important anymore.
Thank you very much for coming to see me.
Bob, you guys do a wonderful, do a lot of wonderful things for the people of Arc Kansas City, for the community. Thank you for what you guys do.
You know, we want to honor and promote our city and say thank you to the ones that make the first calls. This can get a little hairy at times, we all know, right Karen?
That's all right.
Okay, any questions?
Thank you. We just really appreciate it.
Thank you, Bob. Please pass on to the organization, we appreciate the thank you, or the invite.
Okay, Harrison?
Okay, very briefly, just a couple comments. Madam Mayor, you had asked me to try to see if I could find any of the speeders that were going up and down Fourth Street. And I was able to do just that with the worst offender. I was able to track him down at Colley College Dormitory. I got his license plate number and gave it to Officer Sampson. And he's going to follow up on that. Now, he's, he's the guy driving just insane speeds down the street. He's the worst. But I know I seem a little bit anxious about this, but with excess of four hundred cars passing by my house every day, and I, when I didn't, that number, I get that number, we had one sixty-two going one direction from eight to five. So we double that because they're going both ways. And there's a ton of traffic before eight, and there's a ton of traffic after five. I mean, they are, they are just flowing by till nine, ten o'clock at night. So conservatively, it would be four hundred cars a day. Do you see, you see that number? Okay. So anyway, Traffic Safety Commission, I would like to get a recommendation from them because I think you would give this a little bit more clout if I had that boost behind me. I feel maybe there's a little resistance on, on your part to put up stop signs.
I don't feel like it's a resistance, if I could interrupt you just a moment. We have committees within our city that we take recommendations from. Citizens re-ask the committee members, or citizens talk to committee members. The committee members then come together as a group. They discuss their problems, whatever the citizens have told them. And they bring it eventually to the commission for action if it's indicated. So, all we're asking is that you go through the proper channels. Just hearing you every week telling me about cars going up and down the street, well, that's just about true everywhere. I also chased down a car the other night.
Well, it wasn't like that five years ago when I moved here. Now, I understand what you're saying, and I'm trying to go through the, the Safety, you know, Commission, and I gave my presentation. And I want to talk to them again, and I want to get a recommendation from them to you. However, they don't meet real regularly, so, you know, I just have to be patient on that. But if you're talking about neighborhood revitalization, how can you not face the traffic issue? I mean, you look at First Street, and from Maple down to Chestnut, it's straight through. Second Street, straight through, and now it's extended to Third and Fourth Street. It's just, all of our streets have become just through trafficways.
I just don't see the problem. I drive those streets every day, and I do not have.
Yeah, I know, I can feel, I can feel the resistance.
I'm not being resistant, I'm just, I don't have the statistics to back what you're saying.
Well, we did, we had one traffic study, right? From eight to five, one direction, a hundred and sixty-two cars, right?
Is that your traffic study, or?
You gave me the papers, Andrew, you remember that? Hundred and sixty-two cars, eight to five, going north.
Yeah, that was a speed monitor, they did.
On the speed trailer? Okay.
Now, generally, there's less traffic going that way than there is going north to south, okay? And like I said, there's a lot of traffic before eight and a lot of traffic after five, a lot. So I'm coming up with a four hundred cars passing by as a conservative number, right? That's a lot of cars. And they're zipping by. So that's why, you know, I'm pushing this issue. If it was not, you know, if it was two hundred cars or something, okay. But before, that was, they were speeding up, slowing down, speeding up, slowing down. Now they're just trucking right through. So, anyway, I don't know what kind of recommendation you want. I'm willing to go to the Traffic Safety Board and talk to them and try to get them to encourage the issue. If there's other commission members I need to talk to, just direct me, and I'll be more than happy to, to talk to them. But I really think that neighborhood revitalization, and I'm all for it, and I'm going to be going to the beautification meetings, I think it starts with traffic. We've got First, Second, Third, Fourth, all of them, just a lot, a lot of, it's changed. The dynamics have changed over the past couple of years.
Well, you suggested a while back that we put stop signs all up and down there. I, myself, would not approve of that. That's not very cost-effective, and I, I think you'd have more problems with stop signs with more people objecting to that than maybe having to change the speed limit and stuff like that. But I don't think stop signs is the answer. We're going to have to look at something else, and I'd like to see more of a study done instead of, how long did you do that study, do you remember, Chief?
It was, you got it out by, it's probably something I have to figure out. We don't want to get stolen.
Right.
Do we have traffic counters? Do you have traffic counters?
Yeah, it counts the number of cars on the speed in one direction.
And what's a, I guess, what's, the only way you can really compare First, Second, and Third, to some extent, I wouldn't really count C because it has so many dips, and even B's got a few, but what's First, Second, and Third Street car number traffic-wise compared to A? I would imagine A's is straight through for the most part, and it's got to have more than that. And I don't have, I haven't seen a lot of issues with A Street, but maybe there are going more to Fourth. But I know A's is straight through, except for the block right before Kansas, there's a dip there. But, I mean, I just don't know what, is it really that much worse on First, Second, and Third than A Street?
I don't see how.
But see, that's what I'm, I don't, I just, I, I, I just, I go down, I guess, A Street more than I do First, Second, and Third. I don't know if I go down those streets a whole lot.
There's a lot of young faces in those cars going by at, at high speeds. And the parking lots are right, dump right in, down at the end of Third and Fourth Street. So they're pulling out of those dorms, and they're coming right down Fourth Street. Now, there's two problems. One, when you put the, the stop signs in on some of the corners, this is what created this, this through traffic situation. But there's not stop signs on all of the avenues. So it's really a double problem because cars are assuming that everybody stops. They're not looking carefully. Some of the streets are, some of the avenues have stop signs, some do not. I'm asking for four-way stops on all of them. And if people complain, they're probably the speeders or the through traffic.
I don't think so.
The through traffic. Local traffic driving two or three blocks is not going to complain. But college students driving from Kansas down past Chestnut all the way to the college, they're the ones that are going to be having to take a different route.
I, I, I wouldn't do one street. I'd like to know what the other streets are, and if there's any difference, then maybe we do something. But I still don't think putting stop signs on every corner is the answer. I don't.
Cities do all kinds of things to control traffic in neighborhood areas. They put barricades up, or they build curbs and landscape across areas so there wouldn't be access, say, on Kansas Avenue. Now, that, I think, is a little overkill. But putting four-way stops as a deterrent for the through traffic from the college to Kansas Avenue, I think is a valid point.
I would like to have a study from the police department regarding how many accidents or tickets are given in that area, say, in comparison with last year and this year.
And if it's any different than any of the other streets in town?
It's more than just accidents. Accidents, safety is a big part of it, but it's creating neighborhoods. Four hundred cars in a twenty-four hour period going by my block is not creating a neighborhood atmosphere.
I just, I have a hard time with four hundred vehicles.
It's, it's in the, it's in the paperwork. Hundred and sixty-two cars, one direction, eight to five.
Well, that doesn't mean there's going to be a hundred and sixty-two cars going the opposite direction from eight to five.
The opposite direction tends to be the busier direction. I live there, I sit out on my porch.
I sit out on my porch, too, and I have.
Well, what street do you live on?
Seventh.
Seventh is deader than a doornail.
No, it's not.
No, it's not.
Fifth, I walk those streets all the time.
I never see you up on my street.
Sixth and Seventh are very slow streets, very slow streets.
That's untrue.
Compared to my street?
Mr. Taylor, I think we need to have a study done before we do anything on the streets.
Okay, let's get at it. Let's, let's, let's get the study going.
Ask our police department to do a.
Okay.
One of those strips across, those little cables? Can we do that?
We don't have that technology, but we do have the trailer that we can set up and get numbers just like we did.
Well, Chief, I'd recommend this, I, I'm just talking out loud, but I'd recommend you get both sides, you know, coming. Look, go back and see, you know, if we did any ticket areas, you know, any wrecks and stuff in the last couple of years, and get both sides going, and then bring it back to your committee, you know, and then you guys talk about it, you know, in our traffic committee, that's what we, that's what we're going to design for.
We can call a special meeting of any committees, so.
Yeah, they're very focused on safety, and they're doing a great job on safety. But what I'm trying to do is to raise the bar. You know, talking about neighborhoods, you mean, you guys talk neighborhood revitalization, and you've created these expressways going from the college to Kansas Avenue.
We haven't changed those streets in years.
There were additional stop signs put up about two years ago.
That was because of the chief's recommendation through the traffic committee.
Okay, safety, I'm sure the consideration was safety. And what I'm saying is that has created another problem, creating through streets, or the illusion of through streets, increasing the amount of traffic and the speed of the traffic.
Well, let's get, let's, let's go, let's get the council both, what, both coming and going, so we know what the exact numbers are. And he's going to be checking on, you know, the last couple of years, wrecks, tickets, and so forth, in those areas and so forth, and get back, you know, your committee, and you guys talk about it, see what we can come up with, you know.
And I'd recommend longer hours than eight to five, because some of the heaviest traffic of the day is after five o'clock.
Well, let's go from eight to eight in the evening, I mean, you know.
Go to six to eight in the evening.
Or six to nine, if we can do that.
Right. He can do anything he wants to do.
The chief can do anything he.
Okay, all right.
Well, I mean, I mean within reason.
Thank you, Mr. Hurst.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Where are we at? Consent agenda?
Yeah.
I'm sorry. Jeff, do you want to wait till your resolution comes up? Okay.
Need a motion for the consent agenda?
Yes, sir.
I so moved we approve the consent agenda?
Oh, second.
I have a motion and a second for the consent agenda, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Oh, business, we're going to hold a public hearing and consider first reading of an ordinance adopting a neighborhood revitalization plan and designating neighborhood revitalization areas in accordance with KSA twelve dash seventeen, one fourteen, exec, our real call. Good evening, Josh.
Good evening. We, of course, talked about this a little bit before, at the work session. Probably didn't really get into details. The, the proposed plan overall is not that much different than what we have today. There are certainly some changes, and I thought I would spend just a couple minutes talking about what some of those changes are, just so nothing gets overlooked. Probably the first spot that I would talk about is the eligibility requirements, the couple of changes I've made there. Minimum investment is one of them. It's set at five thousand dollars, which is not a, that part is not a change at all.
What do you mean, five thousand dollars?
It means if they're pulling a permit to do a certain, to do work, there has to be at least five thousand dollars.
Okay, I'm with you.
And then I added a second thing, this is what some other communities are doing. And that's that the appraised value should actually increase a certain percentage, not go higher. I think that's pretty conservative. The idea being that we're encouraging people to invest in the property. Not just, not just a little bit to keep it going, but we want, the idea, we want to increase the evaluation of the property. And another thing I am going to remove, it's still in there, but as far as the financial incentives, put community improvement districts in there, but that's not a property tax program, and so it's, it's kind of silly to have that on there. So I'm just going to, I plan to just strike that out there. The idea of that paragraph is to keep people from double dipping on property tax programs. And you're either going to do this program or you're going to do another one.
Okay. Now they can do one, you mean?
Yeah.
Okay.
So like if you're, like a commercial, like an industrial wants to do IRBs, that's probably a better choice for them anyways.
Okay.
Yeah, and I really think that the rest of that page there, the eligibility, is not a whole lot changed. As far as things that are not eligible, focused on accessory buildings, that are not be eligible, stuff like swimming pools, gazebo's, detached garages, that kind of thing. Again, not a change. It was brought to my attention, roofing was brought to my attention at the last meeting. Roofing on itself, if that's the only thing you're doing as a project, is most likely not going to affect your property value very much at all. Unless you're, you've got holes in your roof, or you're talking about dilapidated structure. That's really why that's an exception there, is because we're encouraging people to fix up their houses, remodel them. And in the case, maybe a flipper is going to come in, they're going to do more than the roof anyways. So if they're doing the roof as part of a larger project, that's fine, that's, that's not the issue. Certainly on a new build, the roof is part of the construction value. The only reason that's on there, again, is just, if, if you're doing fixing of your house, we're encouraging you to do more than just maintenance items. The other big change that's in here is the rebate itself. Right now, there's certain districts that's ninety percent for ten years, and there's other areas where it's only seventy-five percent for seven years. We had a work session a couple months ago about that, and there was strong encouragement for ninety percent for ten years for everybody. And so that was changed in this plan. So it would be ninety percent for ten years for everybody except the historic district. And then that district bumped that up to a hundred percent for ten years to try to encourage people to work on the downtown buildings, whether that's housing or commercial, either way. And there's not any kind of cap on that. We did talk about the, the cap on this as well. And this document that's in front of you, it says two hundred thousand. But at our last meeting, we did two hundred and fifty thousand for Compass Point. And so that's certainly up for discussion if it needs to be. And I think the only other thing that I changed that is not in your packet is the expiration date. There was some concern that maybe five years wasn't long enough, so I just changed it to ten years. The interlokal agreement that's in the packet has.
I noticed that there are two different, so, ten years.
That just didn't get, I didn't get that changed in there.
That was my question.
Other than that, I, I think this is a good program. It's worked really well for us, and.
Well, I think we need to, I'm just talking for myself, I think we need to look at the two hundred and fifty thousand dollars because that's, to me, that's going to get a lot of new homes, you know, people that's trying to build new homes, you know, at that point, because you're not going to have much, I mean, most of those homes will cost you close to over two hundred, you know, or.
Things are higher today than they were.
Yeah, they were, so.
And housing values or, or costs are going up, 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 up.
And then that's where the city kind of puts a little skin in the game, the sense, you know, that they can build, but eventually, it's going to come back to us, but we've got to jumpstart this thing, you know? And just like I said, we haven't been doing anything for forty years, and so hopefully that'll be an incentive to get people to.
Want to do it.
Want to do it.
I agree with the two fifty, Jay.
We can change that, that's, that's an easy change.
I think it's hard to build much for hundred and fifty, two hundred thousand, you know.
I think before, it's not, wasn't it ninety thousand, what we had, I mean, in the past, or, it wasn't very much.
The plan that we had when I first started with the city was two hundred.
Okay.
And it may have been lower in earlier versions, but. But that's an easy, that's an easy change. And it doesn't change how the program works.
Yeah.
Okay. Any further comments, questions?
I'll make a motion, do we need to make, I guess I'll just go and make the motion to adopt the, or, yeah, to adopt an ordinance for the Neighborhood Revitalization Plan and Designating Neighborhood Revitalization Areas in accordance with KSA twelve dash seventeen, one one four. And I would like to make that motion with the changes mentioned today by Josh and by Commissioner Warren.
Did, did we hold a public hearing?
Did we hold the public hearing? We're open for public hearing now, if there's any comments.
I haven't seen any. You got to hold a vote. Roll call vote, open the public meeting, don't you?
Do I have the public meeting?
That's what I'm reading. It says it, but here, it's missed, okay.
Is there anyone wishing to make a comment on the revitalization? Then I'm going to close the hearing, and I'm going to take the resolution of Commissioner Rogers, and, oh, wait a second.
Second.
I have a roll call.
Commissioner Eastman?
Yes.
Commissioner Gager?
Yes.
Commissioner Rogers?
Yes.
Commissioner Warren?
Yes.
Mayor Welch?
Yes. Thank you, Josh.
Josh, one question, if we decide that something wasn't working this thing in a year or two, and we want to change again, can we go and change it anytime, or we have, we don't have to wait for ten years?
No. No, you just, we do have to run it through the other taxing entities every time we change it, but.
The only big issue is that you have to give them a, what, twelve-month notice if anyone orders to back out of it, right? Was that the only thing?
Yeah, let's send the interlokal, in fact, any of the entities can back out of it.
Anytime.
Thanks.
Thank you. We're ready for new business.
You have to do item one A.
Where's that?
Employee benefits?
This is basically a secondary part of the first motion, so, yeah, I'll make a motion to authorize the city of Arc Kansas City, Kansas, in conjunction with other participating governmental taxing entities to enter into an interlokal agreement for initiation of a neighborhood revitalization plan pursuant to KSA twelve dash seventeen, one one four, and authorizing Mayor Karen Welch and the city staff to execute any and all documents necessary to consummate the purposes and intent, intents of this legislative enactment.
I'll second that.
I was going to, I was going to second that, but I didn't know when you were through talking.
The wrong one.
Go ahead, Leslie.
Commissioner Eastman?
Yes.
Commissioner Gager?
Could you repeat the question? No, I'm kidding. Yes.
Commissioner Rogers?
Yes.
Commissioner Warren?
Yes.
Mayor Welch?
Yes. The motion's carried. We're going to move to new business.
Item one is employee benefits, will have four parts. First part is an approved employee health insurance renewal for the 2020 plan year.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. I can't believe it's already that time of year again, but we have been working on benefits. So we have been provided a renewal from Blue Cross and Blue Shield to maintain our current health insurance plan. There was an increase this year, and we are proposing that that increase be absorbed by the employer and that employee contributions remain constant with the rate that they have paid in twenty twenty.
Question?
Yes.
Jennifer, where are we gonna pull the money from?
I actually budgeted a little over one point four million.
Oh, did you? Okay.
And we're projecting it to come in at about one point three four for the employer portion, so.
Okay, so, not full two hundred and fifty thousand, you should budget it for more than that, okay.
So this will give, I feel like it will give the employees the time to realize that everything is gonna be going up. And this will be something you can work on with the personnel, if indeed we do pass this, to assure them that we appreciate everything they do.
I want, I want to reiterate that too, that, I mean, this is quite a jump to pay twenty percent of their benefits. And, you know, like I said Friday, the city can't keep up with the twenty percent increase, because we have other things to consider, but I, I appreciate what the city employees do, but they're gonna have to realize it just can't go on and on.
I'd like to make the motion that we approve the employer health insurance renewal with the employer absorbing the increase.
I second it. All those in favor of the health insurance renewal for twenty twenty-one with the city picking up the expense? Say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign.
Thank you, and I do want to take just a quick minute to thank you on behalf of the city employees. I know that they have been worried about the insurance going up, and this is very generous, and we are, we are very thankful. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Ma'am.
This is the same with the dental.
Okay, the dental, it's, it works a little differently than the health insurance. We pay Delta Dental to administer all of the benefits, and then the employer pays the cost of the services that are provided. The only thing that is going up in twenty twenty-one is just the per member per month administration fee of five cents per member, which equates to about sixty-three dollars a year.
Okay, that sounds negligible. I mean, to me, that sounds great.
Yeah, it's, it's a very good plan. We have a hundred and four employees on the plan, and three retirees, so.
Am I on that plan?
Did, did, did I read somewhere where there's a limit that the city pays?
Yes, there is. The limit for the benefit that any one particular person can receive on the plan is fifteen hundred dollars
Okay.
per year. So the, the city would never pay more than fifteen hundred dollars per person on the plan per year. And I've looked at the reports, and it's way far from fifteen hundred that actually is spent.
Kind of wondering when you do orthodontics, braces and stuff, pay fifteen hundred dollars for that, and that's it?
We don't have orthodontics at all on our plan. Yeah.
I guess I did see that, okay.
Well, I move that we accept the dental insurance renewal for the twenty twenty-one plan year.
I'll second that.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign.
Thank you. The next thing that I wanted to bring up is the flexible spending account administration. That is four dollars and eighty cents per month, per employee on the plan. We do have twenty-nine employees in twenty twenty that are utilizing flexible spending to the amount total of about forty-two thousand dollars, so that is helping employees reduce their tax liability on their paychecks, and it does help the employer actually reduce some of the employer's tax liability as well. So it is not increasing for twenty twenty-one, it's remaining constant at four eighty per member per month.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to approve the employee flexibility spending account administration renewal for the two thousand twenty-one plan.
I'll second that.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Same sign. Motion carried.
Thank you very much. The fourth and final item is the.
She's really pushing.
Yeah, I'm asking for a lot. The final item is the principal life insurance. It's a ten thousand dollar life insurance plan that the employer pays for, for each regular full-time employee. The cost is remaining at three sixty-seven per member per month. It is not increasing from the current cost in twenty twenty.
How many employees do we have on that?
I, I didn't look at that specific number, but I'm guessing probably at least a hundred and fifteen.
It was a very good.
Oh, that's nice, yeah.
Yeah, it's a very, very nice benefit to have.
That's good.
Yeah, and it's really, truly not that costly, but it's, it's helpful.
I'll make a motion to approve the employee's life insurance renewal for the two thousand twenty-one plan year.
Second.
I have a motion and a second for the employee life insurance renewal. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign.
Thank you. This is very much appreciated.
You're welcome. Did Jeff leave?
He's hiding, he's moving.
Is that the resolution for South Central Kansas? Okay, go ahead.
Consider a resolution authorizing the South Central Kansas Clinic LLC, subsidiary of the South Central Kansas Medical Center, to submit application to the Kansas Public Employees Retirement System to become a participating employer.
Perfect. So basically, when I got here, we were trying to figure out why SCKC never had any benefits. It was set up as an LLC, so we need a resolution to basically pull it under the umbrella of the hospital being its mortality of the city. And that's what this resolution will allow us to present to Capers by the deadline December first, to get benefits for twenty twenty-one.
I'll move that we adopt a resolution number twenty twenty eleven.
Can we have it numbered again?
Oh, whatever. As an instrumentality of the City of Ark City created pursuant to KSA fourteen six oh one C, to submit formal application to Capers on behalf of its subsidiary, the South Central Kansas Clinic, become a participating employer, providing for the inclusion of all eligible employees under Capers.
Second.
I have a motion and a second referenced to the Capers. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. I'm sorry, Jeff, it passed.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jeff.
Go ahead.
I agree. Consider a resolution authorizing the city to enter into a process agreement with Retail Attractions LLC for economic development consulting services.
Okay, well, you know, we had, um.
Ricky.
Rick Hayes.
Here Friday, and he, you know, he went through his program with you all, and there was a request that we go ahead and add this to the agenda tonight, to consider entering into this agreement, so. His, his cost to, for the services, for the full-blown services is four thousand a month, and it would be a full month agreement looking to do that. And I visited with Jennifer, and I think we can, we find those funds, and, and she might want to allude to that a little more, but.
Yeah, I, I did have some concern with that amount unbudgeted, but what I think we decided is it can't all come from the general fund, it's gonna have to be spread general fund and utility fund, so it would be split equal, general, water, sewer, sanitation.
Well, thank you, Jennifer.
Did, we didn't talk about any other services. He talked about them that day, but we didn't talk about any other ones. Did you get any ide- any idea from him?
So, there, there's a list of it, well, obviously in the agreement, and then I kind of broke down what, what all it provides. Just behind the resolution.
Yeah, I read that, but I was wondering what, he said he had different prices for different areas.
Yeah, so thi- this is what he, this is the full-blown services here that he provided in this agreement. And so, and then we could, you know, we, we can take away some of these things if we wanted to, but this is basically the full-blown.
I think we need a pump bottle rocket to go off first year.
Well, I definitely want him to continue working with our current economic development. Our Cali first.
Right, so where, where Cali first comes in, they have the relationships with the state programs, and things are going on within the state, and so, yeah, we definitely want to continue that.
Well, he talked about that too, you know, about working with the, you know, Cali first, you know, economic development, because every town's got one of those, or not every town, but most, a lot of towns do. And they, and he works for them too, so it's not, you know.
I feel like this is something along the lines of housing, you know, we've always said, well, you, we need housing, we need housing, we need housing. Well, we haven't really done anything. Well, now we're kind of working here by giving some incentives for housing. I think this is another thing, well, we need retail, we need businesses, we need some type of shopping, retail, restaurants here, and I feel like this may be
Our opportunity.
an opportunity here that we should, I think we should take advantage of, in my opinion.
In order, sorry, Jay, go ahead.
It goes back to sales tax. We know, we've been losing sales tax over the last several years, with Walgreens leaving, the, the, not State Store, but the. Dollar General, but the one downtown. The store, and we've lost three or four entities that, we lost sales tax, and, and for this city to be able to grow, not, we, we can't go out and tax the burden of the public, you know, I mean. So therefore, we gotta do something, you know, to, to bring money in to us, you know, and sales tax is the best thing there is, you know. And so I think that we need to jumpstart this thing, and one other thing is I think the way the economy is set up right now, what's going on in the East Coast, West Coast, and people are, you know, with all the rioting going on, I mean, there's just a lot of uncertainty stuff. It looks like to me, people are gonna start coming Midwest, and I think that that's what, I think this is a perfect opportunity for retailers and stuff to look at our areas, because we're calm, you know, and we're growing. And we've got two cities that's, he talked about ten thousand population, or twelve thousand each, and those stuff, and it falls in the criteria that he thinks we could get some nice, you know, retailer.
With the draw.
Restaurants or whatever.
And, I mean, yes, there is some concern with the cost, but I think this upfront cost, we get one retailer in here, we get one restaurant in here, this cost will seem minimal if we can get the sales tax dollars off of it, and if that brings one other business in, then maybe it'll jumpstart something that, you know, we always hear the community say, we need restaurants, or we need this, well, let's see if he can develop, and I think this.
He talked a great deal about getting an anchor store, and then how the retail pops around the anchor. And he gave us numerous, numerous demonstrations of where he's accomplished this, and one of them was Enid and Stillwater, and they were practically in the same boat we were in, so, and he's done a tremendous job. So I don't think a year, we should give him a chance.
I mean, and we gotta understand that he's not gonna come in in twelve months and have a restaurant or a retail commercial in here, it's gonna be a thirty month to forty month process to get going. We just have to, I don't wanna say stay the course, we gotta just trust in the process. This isn't gonna be an overnight. We hire this guy, and then tomorrow.
All of a sudden, it pops up everywhere.
Someone's building a building somewhere, or they're taking over an, an empty lot or something, so it's gonna be a process, but you know, I think it's a, a great start, so.
Kenny, you had something to say, I didn't mean to add in what you.
That's all right, I mean, it was pretty much what, what Jay said. It is that we've got to build a bigger tax base. We don't want to put the pressure back on the citizens. If we can do this, I think it's, it's really, we spend that at Cali first. It's really a small expenditure, like Commissioner Rogers said. If we hit just one retailer that comes in, we've got the water plant, it's up, it's ready, it can handle it, and we need to move forward, and sometimes you just have to jump, and I think that's where we are.
I think you're right.
Well, I make a motion, and we consider a resolution authorizing the City of Arkansas to enter to a contract agreement with Retail Attractions LLC for the Economic Development Consulting Services.
I'll second that.
I have a motion and a second for the Economic Development Consulting Services. Roll call? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. A motion carried, I'm happy, I'm really happy with this one. Let's go with the next one.
Consider a resolution declaring the eligibility of cities to submit an application to the Kansas Department of Transportation for the use of transportation alternative program funds set forth by MAPS twenty-one for the Central Trail Phase One project, and authorizing Mayor Karen Wells to sign this application.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners.
And this is back to our parks and trails.
Yeah, quality of life. So I apologize for this being a late addition to the agenda. I completely missed that we needed to get a resolution of support from you before we submitted the application, which is due Friday. That's on me. In my defense, we did the pre-concept form for this back in July or August, and then I set it aside, because I knew it wasn't due until now, so we had CDBG and other things to work on that were more of a priority, but we've turned our attention back to this proj- project. So basically, we did this two years ago for the hike bike trail phase two. The resolution is just an assurance that, yes, we will maintain anything we build, yes, we'll commit to pay the twenty percent match that's required of the program, and that's pretty much the gist of it. But I do want to give you some background on the project, in case you have any questions, because I don't know that we've actually talked about this in a public meeting much. What we're envisioning, and just to back up a second, so hike bike phase two is still planned and will be executed, but we are being delayed because of Everge's transmission line project. Do we hear back on the date on that yet? Still waiting to hear when they'll be done. But if you saw when they were down there working, the kind of machinery they were doing, you would understand why we didn't want to build a, a concrete path, because there was some giant tracked vehicles, and and they've got their whole yard south of the water treatment facility that'll have to be removed entirely. So we're kind of at their mercy. We have pushed back letting bids for that yet again to next August. So that impacts projects down the line. But we're, we're getting it all pulled together to explain to KDOT what the delays are and why plans haven't been submitted, because they were asking about that when we submitted for the next project. They just want to be assured that we're moving forward. This is the, the next phase that we selected, and we visited with several different committees, including the Traffic Safety Committee, because as you might recall, the original plan for the hike bike trail was to do a phase three that would involve the bridge across South Summit Street. And after considerable discussion, we decided to go ahead and put that on the shelf for the time being, and look at something different. So that's where the idea of the Central Trail Phase One project came into play. The advantage of the Central Trail is, one, it's considerably cheaper. The bridge would probably be in excess of a million dollars. And two, it will really connect the two ends of the town in a way that we can build off of. Right now, we have a good hike bike trail system at the south end, but we don't have any ability to connect that up to Poplar Walking Trail or to anything we might do in the north end of town. The Central Trail would provide that. And it's a really good opportunity to do it, because it's an abandoned railway corridor for the vast majority of it. So we already have the right of way in almost every area, except for a few, and it's wide open and ready for development. So we think it would do a lot of good. It would help connect people further away from the south end of town to the hike bike system. It also will provide us the opportunity to do safe routes to schools projects to connect at least three different schools. And then ultimately, we can look at, you know, what we might want to do along Kansas Avenue as far as bicycle and pedestrian safety, so it all starts with getting the trail extended up to, so we can split off from that. They've changed the TA program, now we can only apply every other year, so we really need to apply, or we won't be able to do this again until twenty twenty-two, which would set us back. We have at least six or seven phase segments in mind. We'd like to get them all in the next decade if we can, so we have to kind of stay on top of the grant windows. This project would be for fiscal twenty-two, twenty-three, and at this time, we don't anticipate letting bids any sooner than probably early summer of twenty-two. But again, we'll have to wrap up, we probably will have to wrap up hike bike phase two. There may be an opportunity, if we, if we can kind of get both projects designed, that we can look at doing them both at the same time, to save on cost, but I don't know that that's going to develop that way, so in our minds, we're still thinking sequential. But this would break off from the existing terminus at the pool, continue north along Sixth Street. If we, if we decide to break this into two sub-phases, which, that'll be KDOT's dictate. If they tell us it's too much, why don't you do half of it, then that's the plan. It would go up to the Northwest Community Center and stop there at Birch Avenue. And the reason is because it actually hops onto existing sidewalk at Lovey Watson Park, so that's a good breakpoint. North of the park, it gets a little trickier. There's actually a property there that we do not own, that we would have to get a permanent easement on. And then after that, it kind of becomes sort of a back undeveloped dirt road alley kind of an area until you reach Robert Cox Park. So there will be, need to be some considerations for the property owners. I think we're probably gonna have to look at some fencing. Um, so there will be, need to be some considerations for the property owners, I think we're probably gonna have to look at some fencing and some other things. But from Chestnut to Birch, it's a pretty clean project, it would basically be either down the median or on the side. Um, and we'll have to look at some traffic safety enhancements in the area as well. Uh, the other option we could do to save costs is just do a crushed rock instead of concrete, and as you can see from your action item, that would chop about, uh, three hundred thousand dollars off the estimated cost. Our preference would be to do concrete, I think we're gonna do these trails, let's do them right, especially because it's more bike friendly. Um, so we've put several different options out there in the hopes that KDOT will see that we're trying to look at achievable means. But I'm fairly optimistic, uh, that we could probably get the full amount requested, mostly because we got a much larger amount for hike bike trail. Uh, as long as they don't hold against this, that we haven't gotten it built yet, and like I said, we'll do our best to explain that situation, I don't think it'll be a problem. The actual city share for this would be one hundred forty-four thousand, seven hundred thirty-two dollars, that's twenty percent of construction and construction engineering, as well as any right of way utility or preliminary engineering costs, which are non-participating. And we would be requesting from KDOT four hundred and thirty-four thousand, nine hundred and twenty-eight dollars. Um, that would be for the total project cost, doing everything concrete, the whole length of the way. And like I said, they may phase that down, um, in which case our, our proportion would drop. And as I said, that would probably not come out of the budget until twenty twenty-two, but by the time we get to the budget process next summer, we'll know if we're gonna get this or not, or if we're closed out for another two years. Do you have any questions about the project, about the financing?
Where, where would the money come from? Jennifer?
Um, right now, we have the Everge or the Westar money, I think, was seven hundred thousandish. Um, and we've spent, I believe, two hundred and thirty-eight, so, um, that's why I told the engineer earlier, we need to spend that. It's sitting in Fund sixty-eight, construction.
Okay, and Tony? He left, okay. Just wondering, I mean, has his, i- is he signed on that his department has the ability to handle and maintain all of this? As you said, was required that we were gonna maintain what we build?
Yeah, that mostly pertains to like, you know, if the concrete starts getting cracked and that sort of thing, we're responsible for the repairs. Um, I believe they already do mow the Sixth Street and the, uh.
Yeah.
So we actually have to maintain that corridor anyway, this might actually reduce their mowing slightly. And I know they maintain all the Northwest Community Center lot and property. Uh, north of there, yes, it would, it would, um, add a little bit until you get to the other park that we'd have to look at. But, um, I don't think it's gonna present too much of an additional burden beyond what we already maintain on the levees.
Yeah.
I think it's a good deal, we've got most bike trail done, so I'm going to move that we approve a resolution declaring the eligibility of the city of our Kansas City, Kansas, to submit an application to Kansas Department of Transportation for the use of transportation alternatives program, fund set forth by MAP twenty-one for the Central Trail Project and authorizing Mayor Karen Welsh to sign this application. Let's look at that.
I have a motion and a second regarding the city to submit an application to the KDOT. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign? It's passed.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Andrew.
We'll have some documents, there's a sign.
Yes. Thank you. Is that it for the new business?
Yep.
That's it.
Gosh, city manager.
All right, well, I'm gonna, you probably all noticed the big crowds over here across the street today, but, uh, I guess, uh, twelve hundred and thirty-seven folks voted early last week at the water treatment plant, so.
Wow, that's a bunch.
Pretty big crowd there. Um, Rice Cali, um, is going to have a, uh, meeting on, uh, at ten AM on November tenth via Zoom, and, uh, they'll ratify their new bylaws and elect new steering committee members, so if you're interested in being in that. Cali County Legislative Committee, uh, noon Tuesday at ten, uh, over at the Winfield Chamber of Commerce office. Um, City Hall and City Offices will be closed on, uh, Wednesday, November eleventh for Veterans Day. Um, and then the next City Study Commission will be November thirteenth here at City Hall. Uh, Veterans Day Parade will be November fourteenth at eleven. And then, um, you all want to, uh, reschedule the, uh, work session that would fall on November twenty-seventh, or just cancel it?
Is that a, is that Black Friday or something?
Well, yes, it is actually, it's, but it, uh, it's after Thanksgiving.
We need to come to the meeting, I do not need to go to Black Friday.
So, you think about that.
That would make it for four.
I mean, I would think unless something pressing's on the agenda, needs to come up, just cancel that. I mean, you either have to hold it the Tuesday before Thanksgiving or the Monday before, is that the?
Yeah.
Or the Monday before a meeting, so.
There might be people that will be out there or something, you know.
Okay. Some victims of law, I should have considered.
Cancel.
Yes.
Very good.
Um, Ree- um, Reeve will have a meeting on, uh, Thursday, November twelfth, from eleven thirty to one, that would be via internet still. So if any of you wanna participate in that, let me know what you can do at the.
What day is that?
Uh, it's Thursday, November twelfth.
So we cancel the work session.
I'll also have some information.
The full crowd, yeah.
Um, another thing, if you're interested, tomorrow KMU is gonna hold a election results, uh, webinar. They're basically gonna, gonna go over the election, what happened with the election, how that might affect municipal utilities, because the, what happens at the federal and state level, um, do trickle down and affect utilities. So they'll kind of look at who's elected and maybe some things that we might be concerned about.
What time's that at?
Uh, it'll be at four o'clock, and I can just pull it up on the screen here in my office if you're interested. Colin Hanson, uh, the, uh, executive director of KMU, and then Kimberly Savi is the legislative, uh, basically our lobbyist for KMU. She'll be, they'll be given an update on that, so, anyway, it's usually pretty interesting if you've got time at four, stop by and watch that.
We'll be serving drinks.
Water, did I get? And then Dan, uh, would like to talk to you about something.
Oh, no.
Oh, no, is that why you're both here?
There's two of you.
I brought reinforcements.
Oh, boy.
Mayor Commissioners, thanks for allowing us to come.
Thank you.
Speak to you tonight about this. Uh, before I get to that, though, thank you on behalf of the Police Department and all the employees for covering the cost of the, uh, health insurance increase. That's a, that's a big, big plus for us, and, and it's greatly appreciated. Uh, I wanna talk to you about, uh, the fact that last week President Trump signed a new executive order, and, uh, the executive order is titled Standards for Certification for Safe Policing for Safe Communities. Uh, the purpose of the order is to, and I quote, "Improve policies and procedures ensuring transparent, safe, and accountable delivery of services to our communities. This will enhance citizen confidence in law enforcement and facilitate the identification and correction of internal issues before they result in injury to the public or law enforcement officers." Now, any law enforcement agency that receives federal funding, the grants, has to comply with the first two principles that are listed by January thirty-first, twenty twenty-one. As you know, we do get federal grant money, and in fact, we're getting quite a bit, because we have a, a new officer that's being paid for three quarters by the, the grant. Uh, I am happy to report that not only do we, uh, comply with the first two, but we also comply with every single one of them that are in that order, not just the two that are required. Uh, along with the document, we did a little checkoff sheet that kind of helps walk you through what those points are. And, uh, also next to those, it has when our policy was put in place, and as you can see, we have been, uh, compliant with almost all of these with, for the last three or four years. So, uh, we are far ahead of the curve, and, uh, we have been practicing these best practices for quite some time. Um, in addition to those, if you look on the back sheets of that checklist, uh, you'll find a, a bunch of extra things that we do. We go far above and beyond even what the president's, uh, order, uh, describes that we should be doing. Uh, we believe that those things, uh, also support the fact that we continue our, our self-assessment, our own policies and training and use of force and de-escalation, uh, performance management tools, and community engagement. So, as an agency, we can certainly attest that these, uh, principles that are in the, the president's order lead to better connections with the community, better police departments, and, uh, we do support those, and we do comply with those directives. And I wanted to pass that along, which is gonna be something that we're gonna use as education, uh, point and, uh, an opportunity to tell the citizens, uh, what their police department is doing and, and how we are on the, the, the leading edge of best practices. So if you have any questions, I have to try to answer.
Well, to me, it all goes back to top management, such as you and your officers and so forth. I mean, uh, with what's going on elsewhere in the United States, you know, it's a sad situation, you know, there's defunding the police departments and rioting and stuff, and no support and stuff. But it goes back, you know, and the problems they've had, but it goes back to just what you just showed us right here, you know? You don't have chokeholds, you don't do this and that, you know, stuff, it's policies. And a lot of these police departments, the bigger police departments don't have policies like we have and stuff. And I think it's, it's stopped a lot of that stuff, but we're in a time.
I think the bigger ones that started to control who.
Yeah.
Who they have and control what they do.
This is just a, a testament to our, the police department, like Jay said, the leadership, I mean, we're, we're a fortunate community.
The standards you set for the department is, is amazing.
Well, one of the reasons that, uh, I, I lured the captain in here without telling him so, uh, is because he is the reason that we're at this.
Thank you, Captain.
How many months have you been working on policy? He has spent an inordinate amount of energy and time working on policies, and, uh, he is.
But he started in nineteen seventy.
Definitely the leading person on making sure that we have these policies in place. Uh, you know, he brings to me a policy that is ninety-nine point nine percent done, and, uh, it, it is definitely done by him. It's, this is not by me.
Well, leadership and good employee, you, you pick a good people.
He's, he's taken the, the vision of the police department and, uh, and created a culture, absolutely.
I appreciate the proactive approach that you guys have taken to keep the citizens of our city happy. And I know there's instances that do happen, but that's unavoidable, but.
Well, exactly, I mean, we, we still are people, we still are human beings, and we're not infallible. But that's why you have to have the proper, uh, things in place and management tools to make sure you catch those and you prevent those from occurring as, as much as possible, and that you catch it when it does, so you can address it quickly.
Uh, I commend you, and I hope you keep up the good work, because I think you get a, an award every year for an outstanding police department. I think it will continue.
Well, and the public, uh, the people of our Kansas City appreciates what you guys do, and they also appreciates the, the hardships, I mean, what you went through with this process, you know, what's going on, you know, across the United States. I know it's put a lot of pressure on probably you guys' families and stuff like that, and we appreciate what you do, and, and, uh, we're right, we're right behind you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you, Captain.
Thank you, thank you, Captain.
Thank you, Captain. Raise him from a tub. Anything else, sir?
Randy?
Well, I think we, uh, wanna recognize the, all the employees this past week that were, that, uh, had some nasty weather to work in and some long hours and, and, uh, but kept things open and moving. And that, you know, the guys from public service, the parks, facilities, the sanitation guys, and then, of course, the water, uh.
He's still standing.
Still leaking? He's standing.
But it's also amazing to me how the citizens have stepped up and really complimented our street department and sanitation, everyone. With, with gifts and with words, and it makes you feel grateful.
It has been nice to see this community rally around the, our, all of the city and city, from the Police Department, the Fire Department, to the city workers. It's nice for the, the citizens, or the employees to be recognized for their hard work, especially this last week and a half between water main breaks and ice and limbs, and, I mean, it's been a lot, and it's nice to see the, the support on Facebook and other social media, and just hearing it throughout the community, hearing the, the word, it's nice to see the community work together to, to support each other.
And the food that's delivered.
Lot of food, I.
I couldn't believe all the food.
Lot of good food.
That's great, I've never seen that before in the years that I've worked for this city, this has really been a first, so. They have our entire congratulations.
Yes.
And appreciation.
Yes.
Anything further?
Well, I, I would like to ask Randy, who I, has there been any s- studies done or anything about a crosswalk light on A in Kansas? It's from, it's from a Jefferson School going south. It's right at the end of the school zone.
Yeah, it goes by our secretion, but it goes to Jefferson and Middle School.
You're talking going across.
For crosswalk, to stop the cars, it's right at the end of the school zone, somebody asked me about it here a couple weeks ago.
No, I can't.
A in, A in Kansas. But there's no lights.
And we did have an incident where a lady had, didn't stop at the crosswalk, and, uh, she didn't see the signs, but the signs are there, but, no, we haven't talked about setting a light on that.
Could, could you do some checking, see how much it'd cost to put a light up for, you know, a push button thing, like there is a? Because the little kids don't watch too much, and at the end of the school zone, I think it's probably kind of dangerous.
That is a dangerous area for kids to walk.
And they're fifth grade and under, so, I don't know how many go that way, but just one would be too many.
Yeah, yeah, okay. That's all.
That's all, that's all, what I wanted to ask.
And make them, second.
On favor?